Good afternoon, everyone. We have a very busy agenda this afternoon, and that is not a joke. So today is August 1st, 2022. This is the work session for the Salisbury City Council. Once the work session is over, just for public edification, we will be going into a closed session. And then we will, after that, be going into a special meeting. So a lot going on today. The first item on our agenda is-
Special meeting is before the close.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's why we have the city clerk. The special meeting is before the closed agenda, which will be after that, or the closed meeting. The first item on the agenda is a resolution to redesignate the Salisbury Wycomico Enterprise Zone. Administration, are you, or do you want us to pass on this one and move to the next item, or have you got it?
Oh, let's do that for the moment. I need to at least pull it up.
Okay, all right. So we will, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is in ordinance to approve a budget amendment for position authorization. Chief Tall, you're in the hot seat, sir.
Good afternoon. How's everyone?
Good afternoon.
So what you have before you is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY23 general fund budget and authorizing the mayor to amend the authorized positions included in the FY23 general fund budget. As most of you are aware, in 2017, the city council and the mayor entered into a grant agreement to create what has become known as the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team, or SWIFT. This program is a mobile integrated healthcare program that includes nurse practitioners and fire department paramedic teams working in coordination with community health workers to address health-related social needs in addition to medical and healthcare needs of individuals who are frequent users of EMS and emergency department system. The impact of this program and the lives of our citizens and community is far-reaching. This program has received several awards throughout the five years. But unfortunately, after the five years, providing this service, the grant funding is set to expire. And we're asking for this budget amendment to officially make SWIFT a permanent position within our department. The funding is twofold. One, it will create the position and maintain the person currently assigned to the grant as a full-time, permanent position within our department. And then the other funding is creation of a deputy fire marshal by reclassifying a firefighter position to that of a deputy fire marshal position.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mrs. Gregory? Mrs. Blake?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And they're, they're just, because I obviously don't know. So here in the ordinance, it says, I guess we're changing for fiscal year 2023, but you really want these permanent. So next time we go up for budget, this should be in the general fund, funding, correct? So this is an expected expense moving forward, even though this ordinance says fiscal year 2023 general funding. My, my concern is, the way it's worded, I just didn't want it to be, we, we get stuck at budget saying, well, it was just for that general, you know, that fiscal year for those two positions. So I, I wanted some type of reassurance or lesson on how this could be actually permanent, permanent.
It can't be. So ordinances can only be for the one budget year. So that in, but in the next budget ordinance, FY24, we'll have it in there. So you can't, we can't, we can't appropriate funds beyond one fiscal year.
Okay.
So every, every budget is a one-year budget.
But we're, we're training the budget. We're, we're creating that position allocation for the additional, for the deputy fire marshal and moving that firefighter over.
So these, this will be, when you submit your budget for next year, these positions will be in there?
Under the position allocations, yes.
Okay. So the expectation is this is permanent moving forward?
That is just-
Yes.
Okay. That was my main question.
Do we have Jack and Angela on? Are they, our screen only shows, oh, hey, there's Jack. How you doing, Jack?
I'm on.
Oh, can't hear you.
You give us, and you, the last couple of years of the SWIFT program, it's had some amazing results.
Yes.
Do you have the latest figures this year that we can update the public? I, I do not, but I can get those for you. If you could have those for the next meeting, that would be great. Yes. Thank you.
April, are you on?
She's not.
She's not? Okay, all right. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Angela, for those questions. I would ask, you know, I got one thing. I know that there's been some discussion about the expansion of SWIFT, and, and I guess maybe bringing on the county as a partner. Is that, is that a, a plan that, that's in fruition right now?
Yes.
Okay.
We have been working with the County Chiefs Association and surrounding departments, and almost all departments have signed on to an MOU for this SWIFT program. So it's still, it's gonna, the funding is going to become a source of question of our resources going out into the county. But yes, the plan is to make this a countywide service versus-
Okay. Countywide service, but with us-
The hub.
The hub and, and running and managing it. So then that would, then is, is that something where we can maybe in the future look for grants to help assist with the expansion?
We, we are currently doing that.
Okay.
We have, the PRMC or Title Health is actively pursuing grants while we are also pursuing additional grants to expand our service to go out into the county more.
Okay. And then I guess in addition to that, would we also, and I would hope if we're doing MOUs with these various fire departments, are they willing to chip in financially?
We haven't gotten to that point yet because we're not really out into the county at this point.
Gotcha.
Getting the MOU signed was the first big hurdle for us. We have had preliminary meetings with the county executive. We met with city administration and the county executive to talk about the service and the capabilities of the SWIFT program. And there is some participation where they would like to see that role expand also.
Because, I mean, we currently serve quite a few county residents, and, you know, I think it's a great program. And, but I just also want to, if we're expanding our services to the county, I also think that there should be a part of that financial burden, shouldn't just be on the backs of the Salisbury taxpayers, so. All right, thank you. Any, any other questions or comments? Ms. Blake?
Do you have a rough idea how much one of those SWIFT calls costs?
Well, you figure our ambulance calls for a non-emergent EMS transport is about $700. And that's, there's no, being able to recoup those expenses because most of them have no insurance, and then Medicare only pays a small portion of that cost, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief. Everybody, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So you got four yeses. You'll be on next week's agenda, sir.
Or after this meeting.
Or, oh, after this meeting, yes. Sitting right here in front of me. All right. Next up, we're gonna take a jump back to, the first resolution to discuss is to redesignate the Salisbury Wycomico Enterprise Zone. And Laura Soper, thank you for joining us.
My apologies. I got caught up in the office. Somebody stopped by, and I was chatting with them. But included in your packet is a resolution to redesignate and to expand slightly the existing enterprise zone. This, every 10 years, we have to redesignate this zone to stay competitive with other counties. So we're working on putting together our application. Before I went out on maternity leave, I met with city and county representatives to talk about the expansion and redesignation. So we identified a few places that we would like to add, which you see include the center of Salisbury, a small area by, off of Milford Street, and then we cleaned up an area of Westwood, Westwood Commerce Park. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mrs. Gregory, any questions? Ms. Blake?
No, this sounds really nice. It's good incentive. I think it's fantastic. Great work.
Jack?
Yeah.
Any thoughts?
No questions?
Okay.
Move it forward.
All right. Everybody else good with moving it forward?
Forward.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Sure.
Can I just note, I would just want to thank Laura, because I know this takes a lot of work and took a lot of time to put together, but it is really critical for the businesses in our community, so thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to wind down LoSAP for volunteer members of the Salisbury Fire Department and adopt a volunteer member incentive policy. Chief Tall, you're up again.
So sitting with me is Deputy Chief Lee Smith. He is our Deputy Chief of Volunteer Services. And what's in front of you today is a resolution to basically freeze the current LoSAP program, or the Length of Service Award Program that was established in 1991 by the city to recognize volunteer contribution and to provide them some retirement incentive after years of service. So what we are asking is that the program basically be frozen as it is today. No new members would be allowed to enter that current program, and instead, all new members will transition to a volunteer incentive program. So instead of being over a career and then you start receiving any financial contribution for your services, it will be done in a five-year increment. So if a member is, starts, they complete five years, they will get a small amount of money to say, thank you for your contribution, thank you for your service you provide. So it becomes every five-year milestone instead of a retirement-based system.
And that's just essentially a cash payment to that volunteer firefighter? Okay. Any, any questions from the council?
Yes. Sorry. What, what is driving the, the change of the modalities of a over-retirement plan versus a stipend after every five years? Is it a financial thing?
It's, it's not a financial thing. It's volunteerism that we're not seeing people stay for a career and, as a volunteer, 20, 25 years.
I see.
So in order to have smaller milestones to reward them for their contribution, this was a transition that the volunteers had looked at and offered it as a suggestion to change our program.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. I had no idea. Thank you. No other questions.
Jack, do you have any questions?
Yes. Lee, Heather, I assume you're all, obviously, members in good standing. Have there been any, have there been any adjustments to the number of hours required?
No, it's still 36 hours a month, 108 hours per quarter, still the requirement.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. So I guess just, you know, the only thing that I would ask is, since, since we're moving in this model of, of beginning with some sort of compensation to volunteer firefighters, is, is this legal within the state law requirements?
Yes, I work closely with Chief Tall on this, and we should, we're considering it a stipend so as to not be confused as wages.
Okay. And this is something that even in the future, if we decide to increase the stipends, is there a limit on that, or is it?
Yes, there is a limit.
Okay, okay. And so are we at that limit, or is there still room to?
I think we, I don't have it before me, I don't think we're at the limit yet, but you would have to really get close in terms of, I think, with our tiers that we have for chief, what was the number of years that we were, we were getting kind of close on? Was it 25?
25.
25 years.
It's the maximum. You don't get credit after 25 years.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Sounds good. Do we have consensus to move this item forward?
Yes.
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 Yes, all right. So you got four yeses on that? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let's, let's wrap this meeting up. We'll go through to do some administration and council remarks. Administration, any marks for the good of the order?
Just a thank you to our team for, for everybody that came out for the ribbon cutting at Riverwalk Park and the first-ever River Fest. It was a big lift by many teams in the City of Salisbury, so we're grateful for them and looking forward to folks being able to utilize that park moving forward. And a reminder, I'm sure somebody else will hit it, but tomorrow is National Night Out from 5:00 to 8:00.
5:00 to 8:00.
5:00 to 8:00, City Park. It's, the phone has been ringing off the hook. Donna's been doing last-minute preparation on her end with vendors, so it's, it's gonna be a packed one, so we hope to see everybody out there.
Good. Mrs. Gregory?
Just want to say the park is fantastic. I love it. It's, it's beautiful and definitely take advantage of it. A lot of fun out there. Other than that, just sign up to volunteer for the Folk Festival.
Yeah, a couple things. I'd like to follow up on some things going back to July 11th. I wanted to bring up again the, the dirt bike ordinance. I think, Jack, even you said that was probably a legislative agenda item. I don't know if it's coming up. I haven't seen or heard anything about it. I know that we had a great deal of discussion about it. We also had a public meeting about it, and I personally have had two episodes where I'm able, I, I had to call the police in regards to some dirt bike situations on Route 13. I would like to see that back on the legislative agenda. I also just want to follow up, and I, I know that it takes the time, I think, to get some people in place for this, but I would like to see how the mobile crisis and the police department are working together. The mobile crisis is a free service to the city, and the police department has been utilizing that service to help with mental health calls. I just want to see how that's going, if there's an MOU involved with that, or, those are two, two things in particular. And I think that there was some more information needed on, and I haven't heard anything about, if anyone's looking up the information, or if it's a closed-session item, as President he suggested, in regards to the fire department's personnel board, understanding its governance and, and just their policy, considering some open remarks that had been made in a past session. I haven't heard anything about that. Those are just some things I'd like to have some follow-up on. And let's see. Also, there was some discussion about some utility bills being paid in increments, or like maybe monthly, like water bills. Julie, you had suggested that at one point. I didn't know if there was any update or any more consideration about that. These are things that all can be on future work session items, I suppose.
That last item could not be, it couldn't be on a work session. It's not legislative in nature, but we can give you an update on it.
Okay, that'd be great.
I can do that right now. We, we actually put it in, we put it in the bid documents four years ago when we bid out our new finance system.
That's good.
And what it's turned out is that that vendor is unable to deliver, and really all these vendors. What they call it is, they call it budget billing, and it's, it's kind of the, the biggest driver for our push, was we wanted that. Now, obviously, we needed to update our system anyway, but that remains a focus of the administration. So we're constantly working with this vendor to try to find ways to do that. And I think budget billing provides such a benefit because the only, you know, for, for all of us paying our, our water bills, that's the only quarterly bill I get. I don't know about you, but I assume that's the only quarterly bill any of you get. So we, we consider it a priority, but it is incredibly difficult because you have to take all those bills and then estimate and project what you're likely to spend, and then you have to recoup if there's a gap, or you have to credit accounts. It's actually a pretty complicated thing from a software standpoint. But the door isn't closed. We won't have any updates anytime soon for council, but just letting you know right now that it remains something that we're working on.
Good to know. Thank you. And as always, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Mr. Heath, in an undisclosed location?
Yes. Well, the good news is I'll be back next week, and actually, I'm looking forward to it. I'm certainly looking forward to the National Folk Festival. It's been great the last three times I've worked it, and I'm looking forward to it again this, this time. So hope to see everybody out there, and we'll see you in person next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
I'm sorry, Ms. President. Can we do one other thing, just real quick? I just want to offer this to Councilmember Blake. The, the question about the role and relationship of the volunteer corporation personnel boards, there's no better time than right now to, I mean, they're sitting right here.
Correct.
To, to bring them up to maybe offer a response and give just some public edification and education around the relationship between the corporations and the city and how decisions are made. So I don't know if chiefs and if the leadership wants to come forward. I want to grab one more chair.
Good afternoon. Ladies, gentlemen, how are you?
Yeah.
I am the president of Salisbury Fire Department Incorporated, which is the volunteer section of the fire department. I'm Todd Dudak. There were some comments made in the July 11th meeting by Cherie St. Paul Hughes, and we just wanted to set the record straight. She only had some of the facts that went into that, and I'd like to turn it over now to my head of the Personnel Board, which is Matt Rajala. And I just wanted to say before going forward, I had to dismiss my own son under the same criteria, so this is not a bias-based thing whatsoever. There's certain, and we have copies for everybody, certain criteria that each volunteer has to meet. When they don't meet it, they're put on probation for three months. If they don't meet it, after the three months, they're dismissed. It's the way we operate, and we try to keep everybody efficient.
So it's a set formula? It's a set criteria?
Set criteria, yes.
So as far as assessment goes, all members are held to the same assessment policy. You have to make 36 hours of service a month. Only 18 of those hours have to be hours staffing a capital firepiece, so an ambulance or an engine or a truck. The other 18 hours can be coming back for a bell alarm, so an all-call for a fire or a spec ops for a hazmat, as well as training and administrative time. So 18 of those 36 have to be on a firepiece or EMS piece. Every member is required to do the 36 hours. I have a copy of the performance guidelines for anybody who'd be interested in getting that copy, as well as a copy of our bylaws to state under active membership that an active member is a member who is satisfactorily completed probationary period and provides at least the minimum service as defined in Article 4 of this performance criteria. As far as the letters that go that have been sent out, every member who has been put on probation or has been dismissed has gotten the same letter in the same order. You start off, if you miss a quarter, by going on probationary period, during which time you're still required to come up and do your 108 hours. However, you cannot vote in corporate matters. According to our bylaws, if you have not made your percentage of your 36 hours a month for more than two quarters, you are subject to being dismissed, to have to be in place on probation. So every member who does not make their 108 hours per the quarter first gets a probationary letter, which states that the Personnel Board has reviewed your performance for the previous quarter and determined that you hereby place on a probationary status. Pending good performance, as well as making the required 108 hours quarterly, quarterly, this probationary status will end on this date. Please remember that during this time, you're not eligible to vote in corporate matters. If you have any questions, please reach out to the Personnel Board by email, and we will answer you, answer any questions or concerns you may have. And then moving on to the dismissal letter, again, I can pass out copies, I have copies passed out. It states that the Salisbury Fire Department Incorporated regrets to inform you that the Personnel Board has met and determined that you are hereby dismissed from the corporation for failure to meet the minimum performance requirements as defined in Article 4, Section 2 of the bylaws for two or more quarters in the year. This dismissal means that you are no longer authorized to participate in any fireground, EMS, or corporate functions involved in the Salisbury Fire Department as of the date. You are directed to return any equipment, uniforms, access badges, keys, pagers, and any other paraphernalia that belongs to the Salisbury Fire Department, the corporation, or the City of Salisbury. Failure to do so promptly may result in either criminal or civil action. Please email the Personnel Board with any questions or concerns. We wish you the best in your future endeavors. Now, I know that was a talking point during the public session, and the reason it is worded as such is because in the past was a history of not getting items back, so just your brass hardware, badges, and all of that, pagers, all of that adds up really quickly. So every single member who's ever been dismissed under this corporate, under this Personnel Board or been put on probation under this Personnel Board has gotten the same exact letter and the same exact order. I know another comment that was made was about signing the letter. The reason that the letter was not signed is because it is a group of people elected by our peers. It's not one person making the decision. I know those are just your talking points that were there.
So it sounds like the dismissal letters are like progressive in nature. First, you get like a warning and this, that, and the other, but once you're dismissed, you're asked to return your items, which is, goes out to everybody. It's a uniforms letter for everybody.
Yes, everybody is held to the same standard. Everybody gets the same assessment. Everybody gets the same letters, the same order, and it's progressive. It's not, you're not just kicked to the curb. We want to make that very clear.
Right.
I just have, how many, I just have one question. How many volunteer firefighters have been dismissed this year?
Full members? Taking their hours, correct. As well as 19 probationary letters have been sent out.
And that's in addition to the 12?
Correct. So of those dismissed, everybody, every single one of them has gotten a probationary letter first, and then has continued to not make their hours, and has then received, they dismiss the letter. 19 other members have been put on probation. However, they have got their hours again, have not been dismissed.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That answers those questions. We appreciate you coming up and, and educating us on the role of the Personnel Board and, and the requirements and-
Mr. Vice President, if I can just interject one thing. So I'm, I've been a volunteer for almost 28 years, and we take this matter very serious, like the, the role we play. And we try, we try to abide by, you know, EOC, and, you know, I'm, I'm an officer in the fire department. There's times where I'm leading a career crew, so I have to know these things. So we, we look at these very carefully. The concern that we have is the city taxpayers are funding our insurance, our gear, our training, and people think of training as free because Maryland Fire and Rescue Institute doesn't charge us for it, but it's not free, right? We all know that's funded through federal and state taxes. So the fear is that if we let someone continue to not make their percentage, it, it de-incentivizes the other people from coming back. Now, we have a lot of people that aren't showing up, and they say there's no consequence. And then eventually, they're gonna say, how, what are we paying for? How are we gonna keep funding this fire department? You know, it's a professional standard. We, the fire doesn't know the difference between a volunteer and a career. So the safety, the expense, the commitment you made when you joined the fire department, it's, it's a, you know, I was telling Matt when he got on, there's tough, tough decisions. People, friendships are ruined, but it's a professional endeavor, and you swear to it, and you take it seriously. And anything, if someone, you know, and I'll lay it out there because obviously, it's hurtful to have allegations made that we don't think are, are based in fact.
Correct.
So if anyone thinks that we've done something wrong, we are open to scrutinization from anybody. We, we welcome our doors wide open. We're all- We're always open to learning, but I feel like we're staying on solid ground with, with any actions we've taken.
And I, I, I appreciate that, and, and I'm, I'm grateful that you guys had the opportunity to express your position on this issue. Volunteer firefighting, you know, it's, it's a lot of sacrifice that volunteer firefighters make because all that time that you're devoting to your community, I mean, you could be out doing another job, actually making real money, but it's not about that. It's about serving your community, serving your neighbors, and it is a sacrifice. And, you know, I, I know we did a little stipend that we set up today, making that change. I, I don't, I don't really think that's enough, in my opinion, but we, we truly appreciate that and wanted to make sure you had the space to basically defend yourselves from a public accusation. So, thank you for coming, and I thank you for, thank you for your service, and we appreciate bringing this, bringing this to light. So, thank you.
Would you guys like copies of our bylaws and just have it?
Sure. Yeah, if you want to provide those.
I mean, we've got 10 copies.
Yeah, yeah. If you want to, yeah, if you want to hand those to Kim, and we can, we'll distribute those to.
Okay.
Everybody, and then.
We just wanted, it was done in a public forum.
Yeah.
You know, we felt that it was personnel matter, that's.
Yeah, no, and she'll take it, and she'll enter it into, as part of the minutes for this meeting, so it'll be on record, and so we appreciate that.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
Any other, any other questions?
I appreciate you coming in and, and giving us an education on, you know, the role, what the bylaws are, where they come from, what the requirements are, and how diligently you handle the, the progressiveness with dismissals. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
I'll just make my brief last remark from the weekend. We had a great time on the River Fest. I got to throw the rubber duckies in the river with Grace Murdock. That was fun, and very grateful to even seeing Fire Department on the water, protecting the people on the canoes and kayaks who were getting hit with water guns from me and a bunch of kids on the side while they were trying to race. So, good time, have a ball. Great to see that little park and the, our little, I don't know, what do we call it? The beer shed that's there now? Is that, is that beer garden? Oh, is that?
Garden bar.
Okay, all right, garden bar. Nice little setup, nice little spot, and great job on finding, you know, little pockets in our city that we can spruce up and make into public use, so grateful for that. So, at this time, I will close the work session, and we will convene into a special meeting, which I am calling to order at this time. At this time, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt the special meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's four to nothing. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2733 for first reading, approving a budget amendment of the 2023 general fund budget, authorizing the mayor to amend the authorized positions included in the FY23 budget.
I'll move.
Second.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is before you for first reading. It's ordinance number 2733, in ordinance of the city of Salisbury, approving a budget amendment for the FY2023 general fund budget and authorizing the mayor to amend the authorized positions included in the FY23 general fund budget. Whereas the need for the provision of emergency services in the city is great, and whereas the Salisbury-Wacomico Integrated First Care Team SWIFT grant has heretofore funded one firefighter emergency medical technician for the city, and those grant funds are set to expire. And whereas the need for the firefighter emergency medical technician remains despite the fact the funds from the SWIFT grant are set to expire. And whereas the Fire Department has also determined there is a pressing need to reclassify a firefighter EMS position to a deputy fire marshal position to assist the fire marshal with his or her duties, and whereas there are insufficient funds available in the FY23 fund, Fire Department budget to fund these positions and reclassifications. And whereas to effectuate these aforementioned changes, the position appropriations set forth below must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now, therefore, being enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city of Salisbury's fiscal year 2023 general fund budget B and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase the current year surplus account 01000-469810 by $98,000. And B, increase the Salisbury Fire Department salaries, non-clerical account, 24035-501002 by $98,000. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's FY23 authorized position budget B and hereby is amended as follows, and we have the position titles for the FY23 revised, one fire chief, two deputy fire chief, one EMS officer, one maintenance and supply officer, one training officer, one deputy fire marshal, five assistant fire chiefs, four captains, eight lieutenants, 13 sergeant EMT PMs, 19 probationary firefighter PM, driver PM, 30 probationary firefighter EMT driver, dash EMT, one fire inspector, one office manager, zero office assistants, or associates, I'm sorry, three, and one administrative assistant, one, two, or three.
Any questions or comments from the council? Ms. Gregory?
No comments.
Ms. Blake?
No.
Mr. Heath?
No comments.
All right. At this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2733 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's four to nothing. Thank you, Ms. Boche.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Tall. We appreciate it, and we will adjourn this meeting, but I will entertain a motion to move into closed session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland 3-305B9.
And our friends on Zoom will have to leave, or I will have to remove you in the nicest way.
I have a, I have a motion.
There they go.
So moved.
Oh, you did?
I'll move.
And let me.
All those in favor of moving into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are in closed session. All right, welcome back, our live audience from PAC 14, you wonderful people out there. We just, Salisbury City Council has just concluded a closed session where we were discussing collective bargaining negotiations, and were considered matters to those types of negotiations. Nothing further. At that ti, at this time, our, the city council is adjourned for the evening.